Should carries. First item on the agenda is to discuss employee handbook changes. Courtney sent out. The information that we would like to change. First one. We wanted to. Start with the earnings and hours of work.
Why would I mean? It doesn't matter. You can go in order of the handbook, I guess.
That's. Change it, right? Yeah. Um, so basically what this states is. Every all non exempt employees must accurately record their hours for vacations, sick and compensation time used. The compensation time earned for each pay period for a form provided by the department head. Um, I made a recommendation and I also talked to Courtney about this that I would like to see. A spreadsheet that's a uniform throughout. Everybody so that when time's documented and then it's handed in. But it's all easy to transfer and easy to read. The reasoning for this is we were deemed, I'm not being disliked by the auditor or the state audit. That we need to have better documentation on non exempt. Employees. I have no problem with that, but.
Are you going to create a spreadsheet?
Um, I will say Lisa actually Lisa has got a really good one.
Okay.
Um, if you'd be willing to share that maybe with some other.
Yeah. Well, there's. We may be doing the roses a little differently. The office and the color office manager out there has done payroll in Tyler before and Rose's payroll is not like anybody else's. Um, they did.
So they will have.
They have separate DOT codes and.
Which funner.
So she may be doing their payroll. Like doing the input part of it. So their timesheet may not need to look like. Everybody else's. I don't know.
And that's and that's fine.
Yeah.
But like if you did the treasurer auditor recorder county attorney.
And I think right now the treasurer auditor reporter, I think our timesheets are all the same.
Are you using one that Carl created like in your year back in the day?
So you guys are relatively the same, so it'd be easy.
Yeah, and it's not one of those that's very, um. It's pretty basic.
Okay, so ambulance would be different.
They they're gonna have to be just because of their.
There's gonna be scenarios that are gonna be different, but.
But I'd say, you know, your normal. Offices that work, you know, eight to four thirty, eight to five and don't have a lot of different. Types of pay and it's basically just their hourly rate. Those could all be the same. And I don't see why we should change anything. I think their timesheets like. For reasons seem to work fine. Um, we can maybe tweak them to include the comp time or vacation or sick or whatever, but.
We just have to make sure we get some form of a copy to the county attorney for his employees.
Yeah.
And I probably would say for Dalton. And Sarah would be good for them to do the exact same one too.
Yeah.
Is there anyone that I'm missing?
Ambulance will be the exception. Ambulance will be the exception. Sheriff's will be an exception.
Yeah, I mean, anybody that's got uh twenty-four seven work schedule or even conservation.
So this would apply mainly to office people then.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, and it might be one of those things that we're just gonna start it and try, you know, see how it's working and if things will be changed. Yeah.
Okay, so then.
And then also.
I'd like to point out that a lot of people are turning in timesheets. It's not like.
This isn't like a change.
Um, it's just that. It's gonna be required now in order to be paid. That way, our hope is by requiring it. Them to be paid, um, people will turn them in and when we have our audit. The auditors will see that we have timesheets and that we pay from the timesheets and that's what we get that thing Donald's because we're paying people. We don't have timesheets.
And then also what? Below where you mark up on the sixteenth and the first, I think it should say employees must have. Sign your sign time sheet been to be operated by the sixteen.
I should remember the word please.
Yeah, and add must. And then I think.
The other one.
On the next page. Where the lines are wide out. The first payday of the month is. That's changing, but I think that we should put. If the fifteenth or thirtieth falls on a Saturday, Sunday or holiday.
And in holiday. What this is doing is. Getting our payroll to current. How things are supposed to be done, not paying in the rear's paying. Or no.
We'll be paying in the years.
Paying for hours worked.
Yeah.
Try that.
In the past.
Yeah, another thing that the state auditor wants us to get, and I think we've made it very clear um and tried to keep it. Up in conversation that this is gonna happen in July, so hopefully, you know, we're trying to minimize all the. Discrepancies that we'll have, and I know there's a few that have been out there and I think if we address it as sooner than later, and I know Courtney's. Come up with a few ideas as like splitting, well, Mike came up with that idea, splitting that one paycheck. I know it's gonna be kind of a nightmare for the auditors department, but.
Two times.
Two times.
Both pay periods, but it's fine. We'll make it work.
And your your article in the paper explained it very well last week as far as um. I don't know how many kind of employees read it, but it explained it very well.
Um, and I'd I'd like to point out that, I mean, if I had my way, I I mean, honestly, personally, I don't want to do this because, I mean. It's it's not ideal, um, but.
Change you up for you.
We get we get dinged on the auditors for paying. Out because and it's not that we pay ahead, um, you know, the paycheck's on the fifteenth and the employee gets their check on the fifteenth. The pros. Problem is is we have to generate and run that payroll a couple of days before. So we've got payroll done. It's to the bank. And it's the thirteenth and say we have somebody leave employment and. Most departments are wonderful about letting us know that, but sometimes we don't know. And we've had employees get paid for a day or two. And they weren't working. They had quit and we didn't know and that's gonna prevent that from happening in the future. Um, and. Once you release that money, um, it's pretty darn hard to get that person to pay those to use that. So. And it's not, I mean, not that it happens all the time. But I know it's happened once last year for sure.
So I think it's standard with. Almost every industry where you get paid the old two week or week or two weeks pay.
Standard.
Yeah.
Very standard.
All right, and then the other one was a line item was um crossed out and the family unless emergency leave. And that would be. This use of sick leave shall not exceed five days per calendar year, just removing that. I want to keep. We don't have to make a decision today, but I do want to keep on the forefront of potentially looking at, and I don't want to change a bunch of stuff right away. Um, but looking at going away from P G. Sick time, vacation, all that and going to a P T O system, not maybe going to it, but at least looking into it and see. And I'm not saying right now, but in the future, just keep that on the forefront that we could look at that. Maybe.
And I will say Zach and I are the only two here that were on that. We talked about that. And um. It's. While it seems like a great idea, um, I think it'd be hard to do that. Um, and I know that you said at your previous employer that you guys they tried to do that and it was pretty good.
To manage it.
No, not to manage it, just to implement it to begin with.
Just to transition it over.
We talked about. Two years, two and a half years trying to get it and. Got more posts and it's.
And not saying that we can't look at it.
Yeah. And it could be something that doesn't change.
We did talk about that um too um when we were talking about this five days and. I think what we decided is it's your sick leave. You've earned it. If you need to take time off to take care of a sick child. It's your sick leave, um, you're. The five days per year. Yeah, I don't know how long that's been in the handbook. Um, it was here when I started. And I know that when I had three kids that were younger, but you could burn through that five days very quickly and then you still had the sick leave. Um, and this was something that was recommended when we did that survey of employees about things that they'd like to change. This was the top. Thing I saw. As far as um people wishing that it wasn't just the five days and I know that. It could possibly cause a problem, you know, with people needing to take more time if they have sick kids, but.
And also says.
I did hear it negative, but.
The use of.
Yeah, I mean, you have to may allow the use of, so it does give that department head the discretion, so.
I think that needs to say.
That I mean, and that's just another thing that came up.
That's what differentiates it from the blanket P T O.
And I think the last item is adding in on the sick leave benefits upon termination. Says. Applies only to employees hired. Hired prior to and we would set that date. So it wouldn't include current employees, correct? It'd be new hires going forward.
That's based on. On. When they retire.
Yeah, so currently if a retired employee.
They can change your to their spouse.
Yeah, is over sixty-five, they may transfer the benefit of that for a year or how much sick time they have left. To a spouse. That's another thing that we've been digging on too because um it's not that that. Being able to convert your sick time into insurance is a benefit to the employee. And they don't feel that it's proper to have a benefit, not of a spouse scenario employee.
And I would agree.
Um, they can, um, a spouse could choose to stay on the county's insurance until they're sixty-five. They would just be paying, paying the full rate. So I want to make that clear that we're not just not even letting them stay on after the employee retires. They're under sixty-five and they want to stay. They can't. They just have to pay that.
Did you by chance run any of this by?
Um, no.
So are we looking to do a? Formal markup of this and then improve it next week?
Because I don't know if you wanna. Gee, I just sent these changes out to the board of supervisors. Do you want me to send these changes out to department heads at this point?
Some feedback.
Feedback because.
Perhaps that'd be great.
I mean, yeah. I think that's important too.
Yes. I think that's a great idea. Get some feedback if any of the department heads or employees have questions. Have them at the table as well.
And by sending the department head, you're also going to send to the legal.
Yes, I would. Yes, I would.
I mean, that he's.
But isn't it, is it Becky?
No.
Renee. Renee Van Borken that takes a look at. But we gotta be a little careful too, because if we revan that that's that's at a four or five thousand dollar cost as well.
Well, that was looking at the whole handbook.
Yeah.
Um, I think these four changes we.
Could do that internal.
We can do that in.
Okay.
Um, I don't think we have to go down there. Her her thing is more with especially with the union parts.
Okay, so I can certainly send the changes to department heads, ask for feedback, um, and then maybe put it on the agenda for next week. That'd be great.
Now. We have some addendums to that for hand passes like ambulances and them.
Those are mainly vacation.
And then they but they don't have any of these items are not in them.
No, we will not.
Okay.
We won't recommend any changes to vacation.
I want just so that we should make sure those changes follow over. Check on them also. Okay, good enough.
There. Yes.
Item number two is to approve payables. And I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve payables and adding in the few from Dalton and the I sec training state rate supervisor meeting.
I'll second it.
Been a motion and a second. Any more discussion? I did come in and take a look through all these. Um, Scott was here as well. I didn't really have any questions. Pretty straightforward. The amount is three hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and nineteen dollars and eleven cents.
Let's see.
Yeah, do you have anything else?
I'll second. Just a secondary road voice kind of. You were cheap, remember? Well, list list wise. Oh, okay.
All right, there's been a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. See what I did there? There it's all there.
Yes, good job.
The most thank you after that. All right, item number three, approved county recorder's quarterly report. Good morning, Ashton. Hi, morning. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Alrighty. Quarter two. Fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Includes the months of October, November and December. On the county side of things. Um. We're down not quite ten thousand from last year as far as. Money coming in to the county. Um, if you recall, we had a lot of. Refinancing last year on mortgages and you can see our mortgages are. Down a decent mountain. In that, but otherwise there's no major changes overall. And on the state side. Similar type thing. We're down slightly, just a little bit in each line, nothing major, but. Uh. Nothing major to report. Otherwise, Amber Smith did start in our office. Earlier this month, she's catching on just fine, so I'm excited for that. And currently we'll look at the resumes today for the applicants that we got for the part-time position, which. For the full time, we got closer to twenty-five, I believe, and for this one, we think we got six. So we only take one, so hopefully.
Yeah, good luck.
Yeah, so that's kind of a changes going on in the office, but if things are going good, otherwise it's a slower time of year for us, so.
Yeah.
So mostly due to mortgage, you said mortgage, right?
Yeah, the mortgages are down five thousand. Yeah.
Well, you're on those rates right low and everybody.
Interest rates were low, there was just a lot of refinancing.
You're never gonna have that this year.
Yeah, you have to get tend to train in the office. It's just a slower time of year this month for us.
And then you'll start, I assume, once she gets comfortable in there. Doing the indexing, teaching her how to do that.
Yeah, we've kind of been focusing on that. Like I said, it's the perfect time to get the training on all of it in because it's just a sore sore month for us.
And Sarah's working out while you're on this.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's been busy. Her pathways have been. A lot of calls on a question that the counter so. Good, somebody. Morning.
I'll make a motion to approve the quarterly report. I'll second.
Some motion and a second and more discussion. If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Excellent, thank you. Item number four, approve the Platts.
I'll make a motion to approve the Mike Dune campaign, keeping taller platt and Mary Walterman.
Yeah, most are.
Just two of them pretty soon.
Yeah.
I will second that.
There's a motion and a second and more discussion. If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Uh, we're a little ahead of schedule, so we are going to, I assume we're gonna have somebody here for the library.
Yeah, there are some gals out here. I don't know if I want here. I'm gonna just go check and see if they're here.
Yeah.
The way I read yours, it is actually.
No, there is no number. I don't know. I will find out.
Okay, I guess. Can we do the? Um, go down and do approve twenty-one dash H S G B dash three zero one down payment. Assistant amendment for that forty-five thousand.
Uh, did I send you guys the letter?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, no, I, well, I I did print it out on your board board or your. I just lost my train of thought. Your letterhead, I'm sorry, your letterhead, but um it was the letter that's going to Joyce Brown at I V E A. Um, just know with this that there'll be additional monies. Going out and coming in, which is a zero net effect to our budget. But I have to put some more money in that budget to be able to expense that out, so.
Is there an expiration date on that? Or just when the money's gone?
Um, since year ten thirty-one.
I don't think I got that. I think it's on the other form, I think. Yeah, I knew it was. Thank you.
Yeah, there is.
So they got. Sixteen months to use it, so, yeah.
Well, no, they haven't told.
Oh.
This year, yeah. And then that program goes away.
So what happens to the balance?
If there's a.
Well, if there's any monies left in the state, then they have, they keep it, and if we have money in our budget that we haven't spent. Or taken in, then it just stays.
I mean, the thing is, we've just been getting enough applicants. But they've been staying under a certain limit, so we've been able to do more more applicants. So with this, what we're requesting one, three more applicants.
But I think already exist.
Yeah.
So this money will be supposed to.
So I mean, it's not a big problem. It's too bad the state did away with this program.
And we don't expense any money out unless we get it. So as soon as we get any revenue in, we just kind of check back to reach above.
So for the public, this is a program where it's a down payment assistance. For new homeowners. And also for uh bringing properties up to speed. Lead lead mediation and. Others instead of bringing the properties up to. Better standards, so it's been a good program.
And it's not just government money. They have skin in the game as well.
They have so much.
And it has brought people. To care.
Yeah, only one of them's been repaid the whole time out on the board. Or somebody didn't stay the full five years.
Yep. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve. Contract number twenty-one dash H S G B dear dash zero zero one. In the amount of forty-five thousand dollars.
I will second.
There's a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Chair signature in blue ink on that one.
Hmm. I'm gonna move along, go down to item number seven, appoint county condemnation compensation commissioners. We did have two constituents step up and take the replacement out two people. And I would like to go ahead and appoint Dave Huffman and Brian Bauer to that board.
I will second.
A motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Let me pause. Right now, okay, um, is it Dan or Dave?
Dave.
And then we have Jamie Han on two.
Oh, yeah.
Would be for.
Three.
Yeah, there is three, but for the farmer section of it, it is Dave Huffman and Brian Bauer and then.
City section will be Jamie. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned that. Who would do it all?
And I can help you get the contact information too.
Yeah, I have contact for Jamie, just would need it for Dave and Brian.
And you need home address and some.
It'd be nice to have a number, but at least an address in case there's letter letters that need to go out.
Okay.
So Jean, you had the first sort of motion on that?
I second.
I motioned that he's saying, are we okay with adding Jamie to that list?
Yes.
Yes. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Um.
And I will also. Mention I just found out this weekend on a good two mile planning zone.
We had a person.
We have a person that's moved out, so we have to find these folks for. Um.
Did they?
Roarbag, Julie Roarbag.
Do they have to live within the city limits quarter?
Got me on the outside two mile.
Two mile radius.
Two mile. Well, that's also real.
And it was a like, is it, um?
There's two men on the right, obviously, I don't.
So probably needs to be a woman.
Yeah.
First check balance. If you can handle, okay.
And you'll have to let me know when you need that.
Yeah, I didn't even have a chance. I just found out this weekend, so I didn't have a chance to look at them.
Um.
Flat book and see if I can find that there.
I don't want to be number two. Yeah, they um she did email me. She said they'd be here around the ten o'clock.
We'll do that one. We do number eleven, approve class B retail alcohol license for L's corner. And they say they had filled up the permit, but the bottom wasn't filled out, but. We approve it and then it gets filled in by the state. Is that right?
Yeah, I mean, we get this form from the state because um L's corner would have submitted their application to the state.
So and then we approve it and does it go back to them?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, it just seemed like we just approved that one. I'll make I'll make a motion that we approve of. The alcohol class B for retail alcohol for L's corner.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Good morning, ladies.
Good morning.
Boy, are you guys ready? We'll call you on up then.
Okay.
All right, item number five is nine thirty fiscal year twenty-four funding library quest. And if you want to, you can come up here. If you don't want to, that's okay.
Okay. Hi, I'm Laura Marsh. I'm the director from Rapids Public Library. And I'll let the other gals introduce themselves.
Linda from Manning, Linda Mulvare.
Suzie already completed. Wendy done. Carol.
So, um, have you guys had a chance to read through the letter?
Yep.
Do you have any questions on that? At all?
No, I don't.
We just wanted to reiterate that libraries are a hub and a community resource. We do everything from checking out books. And other items to supplying meeting rooms for Zoom conference calls. Uh, city and area businesses. We provide free Wi-Fi. We. Are really expanding our STEAM and STEM learning and. Science, technology, engineering, R and M for you that don't know what STEAM and STEM is for schools and community as well as homeschooling. Uh, we're also Iowa workforce access points now that the Iowa workforce office has been close to growing to Dennison. We. Uh, provide um assistance in filing unemployment for people as well as um access for. Um, signing up for jobs. There's a lot of jobs that are. Um, you can only apply on the I know. Um, we also supplies I R S forms. As well as um. Public computer access, so those people that want to file their um. I R S forms online can do so online as well as everything. We also um are a hub for housing daycare when there's daycare shortages in all of our communities for those after school kids. So they come in and they're able to do things in our library. Um, as well as. You know, a safe haven for maybe when parents aren't available during that time. Um, the last couple of years, as you know, social security has gotten. Uh, increases of over eight percent. And the libraries haven't requested any funding in the last several years. So we are requesting a ten percent to try and catch us up.
You are asking for ten percent increase.
Because that wasn't stated in the letter.
No.
Okay, that's why I was.
Correct me if I'm wrong. We have to fund a certain amount.
We yeah, it's we just have to fund it. It doesn't say how much.
Okay, I thought it was a percentage.
I don't think there's a there by code, I don't think there's any percentages.
Cities. Cities do, counties don't.
Yeah.
So my other question too, and then I saw this and I didn't really understand. You have a past special levy for in Coon Rapids, but there's none in Carroll, Glidden and Manning. Uh, is there a reason why or because I see what is it? Point two seven additional dollars?
Yes. That was done several years ago to help fund the library in Rapids.
Okay.
And that's passed.
Okay, so you can even do it if you wanted to, right?
We, it's up for um. There it's good for so many years and then it goes on the ballot again and then we have to read up it as well as.
Okay, thank you.
I can say something. I think there's a, yeah, though. Funding that the county provides is for rural users, it's tax push of the city. But that and so like our rural use was up thirty-nine. Um, since COVID.
Mine was up twenty-five percent.
Oh, but it's kind of driven people to others.
Mm-hmm.
A lot more so. We're kind of the recovery model. For them, male workers are working at home, but they don't want to stay home.
Yep.
So they're coming into the library. So we're we've seen a huge influx in all of our services. And rural use for us, I know, has increased significantly because of the daycare shortages. Some grandparents that still don't have any fun. They're coming in with their kids who's in the neighborhood. Yeah.
And I think also, and that's a great point, I think Heather should like to to. Outdoor uses as well, because we've seen a lot more out the outdoor uses on our. Trails, camping, all that too, so. Okay, well, if there's no other questions, um, do we have any questions?
You got any other comments?
I don't.
So how this? Yeah, so how this works is we're gonna start our budget probably. Well, we're already crunching some numbers now, but when it becomes available, what we decide to do, we'll contact you guys and watch and then.
Yeah, we kind of tape all these. We call nonprofits. We hear them and then later on we kind of. Take care of later on in the budget process, so we do not make any commitments in this.
Sure. But I appreciate you guys coming and presenting.
Oh, we appreciate.
Thanks for everything you guys do.
I have one question, how many meeting rooms are available in Manning Library?
Six.
I was there last week, I was amazed how many different rooms there were in the museums, it was an evening meeting.
Oh.
For the solid waste commission.
Yeah, um, so that building, we didn't change any of the meeting rooms or offices. Uh, mainly because of the fire suppression system, that's true of the daycare centers, we didn't want to break into any of those. And we had no idea of the meeting or usage, we are two hundred and fifty percent on meetings, like. Fifty-six times a month in this small town in Manning, our meetings, and use was. We didn't know, and maybe the community didn't know they wanted, because it never came through on any of our surveys for needs announcing. But since they're there, they're being used.
Every room's a little museum with history of, yeah, that was a pleasant experience.
The museum books, they move.
No, Jean had books on the brand soon.
Oh, that's right. Over you did, when were you passing about, I remember seeing a picture.
Oh, that's wonderful, well, thank you ladies very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Basically, it's a thousand eight hundred dollars increase. No, well, it's eighty-eight thousand is the total.
Yeah.
So it's eight thousand eight hundred additional.
Well, I have to skip number nine. We can have item number ten, the Brita Depot Building Discussion, I don't know, was anybody coming in for that? Oh.
Okay.
Sorry.
Nope. All right, I'm gonna do manure management annual updates quick, I got a list here. All right, A P I dash two eight seven, section twenty-four, Glidden Township, added acres. Met Halber number two, section twenty, section fifteen, Washington Township, no changes. Two eight six finishers, section five, Glidden Township, no changes. D Woodford seven fifty, section twelve, Pleasant Valley Township, added acres, trap, crop rotation and optimum yields, used manure analysis. E Woodford seven fifty-three, section twenty-four, Wheatland Township. Crop, changed crop rotation or optimum yields and used manure analysis. F William Smith, section four, Sheraton Township, added acres. G Brian Plucky, section five, Viola Township, Audubon County, original plan. H Alan Freeman, section twenty-seven, Eden Township, had an original plan. And I, Golden Cuff Finisher Farm, section thirty-two, Viola Township, Sac County, added acres. Or crop rotation for optimum yields, used manure analysis.
Do you do a or not?
Item number eight, we'll discuss township and clerk trustee compensation and consider county resolution, Courtney sent out, we had this discussion last week. About changing for the township trustee and clerks compensation. Um, she had sent out one last week, but kind of mirrored a different, another county.
Delaware town.
No.
So currently.
I think I have it behind here. Yeah, you were right, Delaware, I was looking, there was one for Clayton too, that's what I was thinking about.
And they're currently compensated thirty-five per minute, thirty a meeting and we would go to.
Well, they're currently at thirty-five per meeting.
Arses?
Yes.
Well, they are, okay.
Yes. So I didn't change that, but I did put an hourly rate in there. And I just kind of mirrored what.
So really, all we're changing is the hourly rate?
Yeah, basically, um, yeah. And I mean, I just put twelve in there, because that's what one of the other counties had on theirs, and honestly, that's. It's entirely up to you what you want to pay per hour.
But shall not exceed two hundred and fifty dollars per.
Yeah, and I base that on twelve times a year for an hour. That is a hundred.
So that's at, that's at an hourly rate then?
Yeah, so you're saying that each clerk needs to um.
Hand in time.
Have one work session per much, but when they update their receipts, dispersments and other records. So that would be in addition, so you're going to do that twelve times a year, plus the three meetings they have to have for pre-budget, budget and financials. So.
So it'll be thirty-five, thirty-five, thirty-five plus.
And so I added those together and I come up with two forty-nine, so that's why I put two fifty.
Okay.
So honestly, if you want to adjust the rates, then we just have to.
So you're paying the clerks hourly raise for their. Their work sessions, okay, because I wasn't getting that to come up. I was thinking thirty, okay.
And like I said, I just use twelve, because one of the other counties had that on there, so. Um, we did hear from one clerk in another township. That felt like, I think he, I think his exact words were, the county's getting ten percent raises, so we should give him a raise too. Now, um, explain to him that. The county is not getting ten percent raised, that that has not been decided yet, but he says it's been a long time since. They didn't allow, so.
It's not been as long as it was the last time.
Probably not, because it's changed since I've been.
Yeah.
So basically, I thought you guys want to discuss this, see if you want to do more than the thirty-five or more than the twelve dollars an hour and then.
They're currently at thirty-five.
Correct.
And there is no hourly.
Correct. So right now, the clerks are not getting compensated for their time that they spend. Bank or doing their pay, I'm going to call it a bank reconciliation each month.
And is that normally the discrepancy, is that where there's some?
Well, I think it says in the code that the board supervisor shall set. An hourly rate, and that's, I think, what Leon had a problem with, is that the county did not have an hourly rate set, so he wanted to see that. He wanted to see those clerks get compensated for that time they're spending each month.
Whatever we do here, I think. We need to send a letter out to all the townships.
That's, that's what we should do.
And let them know so they, they know they got to file for that.
And document ours.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they're really good about that.
So you think maybe.
Per hour, essentially, per meeting, correct?
Now we are, we're gonna check. But with this, with this reconcili-. A clerk on their work session, which is an hour a month, yeah.
So will that require a time sheet then? I'm not trying to complicate.
They'll turn it in, they're, they're not employees.
Gotcha.
Okay, um, or I shouldn't say.
They're elected.
They're elected and appointed officials.
Or a board township's appointment.
Yeah, we do pay them through payroll, but they. In order for us to pay them, they have to turn in a time sheet, they're already doing that, so. This would be a little bit different, because they'll just turn them in when they have meetings, they don't turn them in on a weekly basis, so.
In my opinion, we should send this out to. Pay an email to all of them and see if there's any recommendations or anything back before we approve this.
I don't have emails for.
A lot of them.
Them, I, so I would have to.
Well, I think whatever, if we, if we put an increase in, I don't think there's going to be any other recommendations.
Okay, so in your opinion, you want to go ahead and approve this?
I think, well, well, I think, like I said last time, we're going to open this up now. I would say we make the adjustments and raises that we're going to do on it, do it now, get it done with. Then approve this. If we, they're currently getting thirty-five. I think we could change that meeting rate to forty and. I'm not so sure that twelve is a little on the light side.
There are, there is a county that does.
As you say, they say, flip hamburgers for fifteen bucks a guy.
So there are a, a couple of the counties that do, you know, their meeting rate, say, is forty dollars. Then they also pay their clerk forty dollars a month. For.
For work session.
Yeah, which would kind of, you know, I don't know, if it takes an hour, but it might take them two hours, I don't know, I was.
Just stay in per session.
Yeah.
Instead of going into that.
So you could do that too, so you'd pay, basically, you'd allow for forty dollars. Per hour, not to exceed.
Well, I was, my, my thought was, let's say, what if we change this to forty dollars? Per meeting and then, and the work session to fifteen.
So two flat fees?
Yeah. I just think twelve is, and me, I'd probably, somebody might tell me fifteen's too light too, but.
But.
It's better than what they got.
Also, what we're going to say too, there are counties that just do the flat rate, forty dollars, call it good.
Yeah, they, so like they, they pay the forty dollars a meeting. And then they give the clerk another forty dollars a month. To take care of.
All the bucks.
Which is basically, I mean, if you say it's an hour's worth of work a month, that's like forty bucks.
Eliminate the need for time cards.
Well, they'd still turn, they'd still have to turn in their sheets and request to pay them, and we aren't going to just give them. That flat hour. Of pay, they're going to turn in the time sheet and they're going to have twelve times.
Gotcha.
You know. Because if we don't require that, then we're just saying everybody but the township people have to turn in time sheets, I don't think that's fair.
So then, then the maximum would be six hundred dollars for the clerk.
Yeah.
And then, and then the trustees. Maximum they can get paid is six meetings per year and after that day, we get approved for laws.
They, they could have up to.
Six, right?
Six. Um, obviously, they normally only have three.
But there's times they have these disputes that they get involved.
Sure.
Ben's line of speech, well, there's, I know one, they had more than six meetings. It drove out long time. Fortunately, we don't have a lot of that. I, I, I wouldn't be opposed to that either. Do we need to, but then do we need a state for our only rating area?
According to the code, you have to have a set hourly rate, but I think, you know, we were concerned that maybe. A lot of hours would be getting turned in, so, but I think if you. Put a, a cap on that, then you don't have to worry about.
Put a max on it?
So would that work better for you, if we just want forty bucks straight through?
It doesn't, honestly, because they're going to be turning in time for their meetings. And then they're going to have to turn in time for their, um, they work to it, so.
So how about you give it a resolution number, make the changes Jean recommended, and then we approve it next Monday?
So just, you'll just do forty straight across?
I think.
And then put an hourly rate of fifteen if we need, if, and I think, make a note in there if hourly rate is needed. Because with, with the way we're planning on doing this, we really would don't, shouldn't have to use the hourly rate, but we're doing. Due to the code. Right?
So how do you want to word that, because right now, it says clerks are expected to conduct. One work session per month, at which they'll update township receipts, dispersments and other records when they pay, what, an hour?
I would say.
I don't think we can go flat, if the code says we need to have an hourly rate, we can't do just a flat, we do the. Not saying it's going to be forty, but forty and the fifteen, they just want to do the flat, so that we can follow code.
So you're saying just go forty and fifteen?
The only reason why I'm saying that is because code does say supervisor shall set an hourly rate, and I think that was kind of part of the problem. We didn't have that set hourly rate. And when we're talking dollars at the end of the year. You're going to see. A hundred bucks different.
That's not.
And the work they did was pretty thankless.
Yeah.
Zach, do you have any comment on that? So we could put it on next week, so we can get a, does that make sense now, the forty and fifteen, and get a resolution number? If Mike has any feedback. Sweet chip. Table that. So we got a good fifteen minutes.
See, and recess?
Um, actually, no, we can canvas. Do you guys want to do committee reports or canvas, let's do, let's. All right, we're going to go to item fourteen, election drain twenty-three canvas. Uh, this election took place Saturday, we need to canvas it today so that the elected official can take ours.
All right, so this. She said the election was on Saturday, it had a total of six votes, that includes a couple absentees, I believe, so four people showed up. And I think three of four people. Emily worked it, she was here from one to five. So, um. Up for election was Drainage Drain twenty-three, district number two, which is held with Ida Bauer. Um, he was re-elected with a total of six votes. That is that, does this need a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion to accept the. Candace result.
I'll second, any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there any way that we can shorten that timeframe up on that election?
Legislation changes, because it's in the code.
It's by code.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, that's just almost.
And, you know, people have said, well, just have it during the regular election, well, a drainage election is not like a regular election, because. You don't have to be registered to vote, to vote in the drainage election, you have to be a landowner in the drainage district.
You want to know.
Expensive election for the number of votes.
Yeah, we make our own ballots. Um, there's one publication, so. And the people that work the election are drainage, the board members that aren't on the ballot, so. The costs are pretty minimal.
Oh, so that's good, okay, I didn't realize you made your own ballots.
Yeah, we do, they're paper.
Then they get to be their own election workers, I didn't, I didn't realize that.
As long as they aren't on the ballot.
After twenty-two years, you still learn stuff.
Look at you, learning, you make me proud.
Hard with, who can vote in it to make it, so. You'd have it like with the general election or something, but.
I can go ahead and I'll start on committee reports. Last week, I had the newspaper and radio. And then I did meet baitings up here and a couple of the department heads with the blueprints and kind of. Just discussion, open discussion on how these next two years look with H VAC. Some spatial needs and remodeling. I also had a conversation with Thisha, because that main floor is going to be the one directly affected currently. And kind of just been overseeing the demolition of the jail, and I apologize again if there's any loud noises. There's going to be some loud noises, because those cells are big, quiet, or actually, Ashton, you probably hear, because it's pretty directly.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I apologize for that. But I think it went well, we're going to try our best to have communication with all department heads and employees, we're going to rely on the department heads to have those. Conversations with the employees to keep everybody open and we'll, I think we'll keep pulling meetings together when things kind of start getting underway and keep. Just communication as much as possible, I know this, this whole scenario is going to be a little. Interesting for the next two years, but we'll make it work, and results is going to be fantastic. Um, then we had a conference board meeting, everybody was there with that, it was a budget amendment. Yeah, you weren't there, there was a budget amendment, but no new monies, it was just a transfer to get through for the year, so there was no new monies, it was just. Taking money into one account into another. Then I did have lunch with Brian Best, and we had a lot of good conversations with the stuff that's going on, um, state. Up at the State House and with just some legislation. And I also had a daycare meeting, things are going well at the daycare, they are still looking for three full-time people. And a cook. Um, we did do some pay increases for the executive director. And for Lexi, which would be the assistant and executive director. I will hand this around, um. You guys can kind of take a look at it, but things are going well. You know, they're still struggling with staff and. Things like that, but if you have, if you guys have any questions. Um, then we also had statewide, or twenty twenty-three newly elected ISAC meeting. I will have to say this is my favorite meeting. Unfortunately, two years ago, it was canceled because of COVID, but we got to go back and. I love it, it's a refresher, you learn so many new things. Um, there will be some stuff that we get when we get the presentations, that I would like to hand out to everybody, and there's a certain voids. Boards that I would like to see. Get them as well, um. Again, I, I highly encourage any elected official to attend that one, because I have a checklist of things that. We need to look into, that I'll be having conversations. Um. Just trying to think of some things that really stuck out, I know. Scott called me about the presentation towards the end of the day and is really excited to see that PowerPoint for the reporter. There was somebody there for the recorder auditor treasurer that broke, broke down to the roles and responsibilities and duties and things, and. So seeing that. Um, we did have great conversations with other supervisors. Um, we did have great conversations with other supervisors. About what compensation board we're doing across the state this year, and there is a wide range of. Where those percentages are at. Um, I think that's it. That's all I had last week. And then this week I have, I'm gonna attend that Tifft abatement. Lunch and learn tomorrow at region twelve. And then Thursday I'll be up here for an informal just discussion. I'm gonna go up to the. Um. On the state side and just keep them aware. And informed on some of the changes that are gonna be happening in the courts.
And maybe Thursday discussion on asbestos abatement. Hang on, that's. Monday, I missed the conference board, so I had RSVP and foster grandparents. Um, I did attend new officers. School and. Um, what's more than Wednesday, Thursday, Stephanie highlighted that it was definitely value added. This week, uh, one o'clock today, Jean and I have union negotiations. Tomorrow is eleven thirty is region twelve, the tax income financing. Uh. And um Wednesday I'm gonna attend the board of health. And Thursday. And we go Stephanie upstairs. Clerk of courts and perhaps um. More asbestos abatement removal plan.
I also want to mention too, uh, we've been working on scheduling our department head or elected official department head three budgets, so we guys. I've seen somebody else on our.
And then.
Yeah, Jean.
Okay, Monday, I had the conference board that most of us attended. Uh, Wednesday, Thursday, new officer school, again, I think. Scott has said value added. Uh, means. It uh. They're never too old to learn, and there's always something new, and I think that one of the things that's nice about this. It it brings everything up to current standards, you know, as things keep changing, so. Uh, and then Friday I had the yes center board meeting up at Cherokee. Uh, we did approve the election of the board chairs and all the officers. And they all stayed the same. Uh, again, I'm on the executive board. Uh, we did adapt some policies, some procedures, some changes. In regard to um um. Restraints as far as handcuffs and stuff like that. And uh, we also wanted, we are. Uh, somewhat looking at possibly another. Another county may wanna join us some way or form a note. So we're kind of entertaining that at this point. Uh, as as of Friday, they had five in there. They averaged nine point two for the. Month, uh, last month it was twelve point seven. We did not have a board meeting last month because. They got canceled. I can't remember was due to some illness and a lot of things going on. Um, one of the things that did happen this last month, we had a. Client assaulted the uh one of our staff. That would be quite an issue. Uh, we're looking at a twelve percent increase in insurance. Uh, but I will say that the yes center is. Probably. In the best financial status I have seen it all the twenty-two years I've been on it. Due to the number of kids and stuff like that. And again, I will bring up normally when I was on this board. For this long, the average. Count receivable. Would probably been in that twenty to thirty-five thousand. This last month it was a hundred ninety-six thousand, three hundred thirty-eight dollars. And this is current. So that's how much our. We've got kids going through that process. Uh, with some of these counties.
Woodbury.
Thank God for us. We've been fortunate, but some of these are talking twenty-five, thirty thousand dollar a month bills. There are men in their budgets constantly.
Just curious, um, oh, you're in New York again. How many? Juveniles. Children can they hold?
It's fifteen, fifteen bed. Um, so every member has a is assigned can have one bed. So let's say there, if they have the beds are all full. And if Carroll County would have two in there and someone else had to bring one in. We would have to, basically, one of ours would have to move somewhere else. That's the way twenty eighty agreements go it up.
And there's only one other facility. Right?
No, no, there's, there's just more facilities.
Yes.
There's one in Woodbury, there's uh ours. There's one uh Iowa Central uh person, hope of Ottawa County, that one is one down by Des Moines, there's.
And they're all pretty much full.
Yes, they're all full. Uh, there's, the state has. Put a lid on the beds, number beds. We would like to increase our bed sizes. And right now we're a fourteen county organization. But what we have done is in order to make sure that we turn it, we also have a contract with the BIA Bureau of Indian Affairs. So we have. Those people bring in uh Indians from uh out of Nebraska. To fill beds that we have open, but they're the first ones that go out too. We have to leave the beds. And that's understandable. That answer your question?
Mm-hmm. I mean, it's great that your financials look that way, but it also, it's a caveat because that just means we're having so many issues with children.
It's the good and the bad and the ugly. It's good for facility, bad for accounts, but the other thing you gotta remember. We're having, you know, the B BIA is also covering that. One of the other things that we do up there is we do uh transportation for juveniles. And also we're doing transportation for mental health. And that has gotten to be just. Ridiculously. Is we have people that are gone. Ten-hour trips cross state taking mental health people cross state. And there's just uh, and actually, they pick up here from the county and it's, it's a better situation where the county is cheaper. Because we we keep a deputy that's under where they need to be, and we're not having them transported. The other thing is we did have our, the audit firm was there. Give us a audit, and it was a clean audit, so give that to you. Then Courtney, you can keep it when it comes down to you. That was Friday. And then I had a lot of different conversations again regarding planning zoning over Glidden. And uh, this week, uh, Monday, I have, at one o'clock, we have the amends union negotiations. Tuesday have GG. Carroll County Growth Partnership Board Meeting, Tuesday is Policy Council meeting. And also uh on Wednesday, then I have Rolling Hills. We're gonna do finalize our budget, which is our mental health region. Uh, Thursday I have uh. A uh new orientation for board members out of new opportunity. And then at four o'clock, we have a board meeting, and then also I'll probably send them on up here with your stuff up there, up here, upstairs. Uh, I could probably fit a few more things in.
Yeah. We're gonna do item number nine, ten o'clock.
Yeah.
No, I'm so sorry. We're gonna do the Brita Depot building discussion, so we received a letter. With.
Proposal.
A proposal to purchase the Brita train station. Um, with this letter, we now have to set a public hearing. To allow anybody else that would like to make an offer of the Brita. Depot. I would recommend doing the public hearing as soon as possible, potentially next Monday. Can we do it that quick?
No.
No, has to be two Mondays from now.
So we're looking.
Six.
The six. I'm staring at her. Yeah, February sixth.
And this will allow the um.
During our meeting, correct.
Um, a special timer, let me just see if they follow. As of now, the agenda is wide open that day, so. At the time, lot of times we'll do nine thirty, ten.
Let's do nine thirty. Do we announce now what that offers? We don't.
Okay, I think that, so. Correct if I'm wrong, I won't, but you're gonna put meets and bounds on it, rough meets and bounds, subject to survey. I gave you some numbers that.
Yes.
Okay. And.
First rider refusal is.
You've included that in your proposal.
Yep. I'm just making it clear if anybody else steps forward that they have to share that the county is requesting that we have first rider refusal if it were to ever, if we allow it to be sold. And then if that. Person decides to sell again, the county has first rider refusal. So.
So then on February sixth, we will receive a formal offer from you then, from a.
Yeah, yeah, I just, I didn't wanna infer the attorney's fees if it's something that they run on.
Well, and I.
Too.
I did have a visitation with Jason Kush.
Yeah, yeah.
I called him in regard to that. And after I visited with him, I. Feel very confident that I will make a motion on the seventh, February sixth at nine thirty for public hearing on the disposal. Created.
I'll second.
Here's a motion in a second and more discussion. If not, all is in favor, simply by saying a I.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And that'll be publicated in the newspapers as well. Alright, next item on the agenda is item number nine, ten o'clock, this, no, so sorry. Yes, this is your twenty-four county employee health insurance renewal. Mark's gonna tell us that it's two percent. It's gonna be great.
He's gonna tell us. It's minus two percent.
Same as.
It's a pretty good guess.
Can't be too bad. There's no copier, don't hurt.
No, it's actually very favorable. Good.
Thank you.
Guys have been on a rational run with Walmart. And it looks like it's gonna continue. I like already what you're.
I like it. It makes me happy.
We need a breakfast pizza or anything?
I probably could have just sent an email is what I could have done.
But then you wouldn't have to see us.
Well, that's true. That's true.
You would have been able to spend quality time with. Some of your favorite people.
I agree. I agree. No, I, what I did is I just put everything together like I've done in the past. It's uh, it's in the right-hand side. You just pull that out. We'll go through the renewal. We'll go through some financials. We'll talk about uh the next steps. There's a couple of things we wanna talk about maybe before the renewal. One being the wellness plan that we had talked about. There's also a new Pruden RX, which is our specialty vendor. Helps us subtract some of those dollars from those co-pay cards. And set up another meeting to talk about that, but. We like to implement that before July one, which means we have to make that decision before April one. So we'll set up another meeting for that.
So this will be drugs from somewhere else, or what?
Just the the specialty drugs that have co-pay cards. Which most of the specialty drugs have co-pay cards. What they can do is they can actually, those co-pay cards have a dollar value. Take Humira, for example, has like a fifteen or sixteen thousand dollar, dollar value. You currently have a hundred dollar co-pay. So the member might only pay ten dollars. We we subtract ninety dollars off that co-pay card. So with the new plan, we changed the co-insurance. The member would pay zero. We would change the co-insurance. Subtract a bigger dollar amount, which helps the county. With that dollar amount that we subtract, we share that with Pruden RX. They they kind of bill you as kind of shared savings kind of thing, but. Uh, a lot of plans have saved in. Ten to fifteen percent on their specialty spend. Even with the cost share.
Would that cost the employee anymore?
Nothing. Should be no impact to the employee. We'll have more information about that.
Okay.
So you have to get this shipped in somewhere.
Same, same vendor and I think all that kind of stuff should never impact it. It's just how it works through the co-pay.
Or you're ready to vendor.
Well, what they're going through today should not be a change. Yes.
And with the specialties, there's only certain places you can get them.
Farming.
With the specialty meds, there's only certain places in Carolina people.
Yes, yeah, there are a lot of those drugs are, can be refrigerated and all that stuff, and they're pretty good dollar amount. You have a couple of them on your plan. We'll talk about. That cost, costs a little bit of money, so they don't have those sitting in the local pharmacy. Cause they're not very popular, for one thing, they're just for certain conditions. They might have new mirror and stuff like that, just because they're pretty popular. But again. Actually, I shouldn't have brought it up. I should have waited till the end, but we'll talk about that in more detail later.
Yeah.
Uh, I'll go through this about as fast as you allow me, cause I see there's quite a few people here still wanna talk to you about some other things, so. Uh, this is your meeting, not mine, so stop me if you have questions. Okay, this first one is our ag report. So this is how your current contract is running as of July. So you can see here uh facility claims, practitioner claims, pharmacy claims, total claims and stop loss claims, stop loss claims are zero. Always a good sign. Flip that over. It just kind of shows you where you are as uh. An ag. As well as expected claims. So I highlighted the minimum aggregate amounts, basically how we set our suggested or suggested uh claims. So that number is almost a million dollars. You're currently spending less than a little over seven hundred thousand. So I know your rates are not actually set on that. It'll be less than that. So you still should be seeing some money going save in your, in your bank account, so things are running pretty well. Go to the next report. That is your contract that just ended in July. So you can see you have eighteen months, so basically you have a twelve eighteen contract, so anything incurred in the little current twelve months paid in the eighteen months. So you can see. When you look at pharmacy claims, there's zero basically towards the end, because there's no more claims being happening, but we're still paying claims that happened in the first twelve months. You can see stop loss, stop loss credits of a little over a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Still running very well. We'll turn it over. You can still see uh. A surplus too, quite a bit of surplus if you were, the surplus number that five seventy-seven is actually the. Estimated aggregate deductible, so that is if you add an aggregate claim, so that's implied at twenty-five percent for your ag insurance. But still should be receiving or received uh some actual additional funds in your bank account that you didn't need to spend for claims. The next report. Is your two-year cost summary. Reason why I show you this is the things that I have highlighted. Those are your uh pharmacy rebates. So you, you still gonna get rebates uh the number down below. You can see the. The eleven twenty-two. The thirty-two thousand, and you had thirty-two thousand in August, you had nineteen thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two thousand. The numbers have increased. Which I tell people is good and bad news. It just means you've spent more money to get more money, I think, so there's a couple, couple medications that are currently being used that's driving that up rebate. Dollars. And those rebate dollars will not change with the new Pruden RX. That is just a co-pay card. Rebates would still run through the county. Then we have our executive annual report. This is what underwriting provides me. Uh, with the renewal. So you look at the bottom of the second page. Your benchmark, just wanna point that out to you, is all of our county and city business, so like plans, okay? So then page three looks at. Your trends. Little bit of a, you know, decrease in inpatient, a little bit of increase in outpatient, but overall your trend is a little over, a little less than five percent. Which is very good, cause our, our, our plans, our block of business is running about eight percent, so you guys are still running very well. The next page shows you some hard numbers, so this shows you the dollar amounts, the total amount spent. So currently, uh, you spent uh just, you know, one million, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in claims. Most of that was through medical. You can see your uh pharmacy has stayed very consistent from last year, but it has increased a little bit from the prior year. You look down at the bottom, membership, this went down just a little bit, a few less employees this time period than you had last year. The next page just kind of shows you a little bit more about enrollment. So again, you had a little bit less employees. Uh, members have stayed pretty consistent though, so you've lost a couple of members. The average employee, uh, average age of an employee is a little over forty-six years old. The average uh member is thirty-two. You look down below, you got uh quite a few, not quite a few, a few more males. And you do females as employees, but when you uh look at the total at the bottom, kind of flip-flop, so you got a few more female members as you do males. The next page is always awful. I'm skipping the first here. Flip it over. This is where you see. The demographic uh of your group, so you can see you have lots of school-aged kids, so you have sixty-five that are in school, the five to eighteen-year-olds. You do have a little few less, a couple less. You do have a little few less, a couple less sixty five year olds, but you still have twelve. You have a little bit more of the fifty or twenty six to thirty five girls, which is which is good. Maybe you had some turnover, hired some younger people. So a lot of family contracts, no surprise, you guys help the families with contributions, so you get quite a few families, you have thirty one percent of yours, you take single coverage. The next page, page seven shows you our network is working for you. So this shows you that forty five, almost forty six percent. Of what was billed, we save you because of our contracts with our provider, so one point four million dollars we've saved you. From what they wanted to, what they billed us to what we paid. Everybody's using the network very well, you see ninety nine point eight percent of all claims go through the network, so you look on the graph on the right, it's less than ten thousand dollars. That's gone through the crowded network. The next page is always interesting to look at, you guys do a good job of this, you'd see the thirty four members or nine point eight percent of your group use no claim dollars. That's no pharmacy, that's nothing. So. Would like to have that actually, it'll be a little bit less, actually. We want some of these members to make sure they get their physicals, because those are ACA things that are paid for free, we want them to have a relationship with their doctor, they have, you know.
So it's thirty four people that have no claim.
That's, yeah, that's not just employees, that's everyone, yes, exactly. Yes. That's that's very good, so then you see I draw a line at a thousand, so you have a hundred and eighty nine people use less than a thousand, so that's fifty one point eight percent of your group. Which over on the right equates for a little bit less than four percent of your total claims. Then I go to five thousand. Two hundred and seventy four members or eighty one point six percent of your group use less than five thousand dollars. So no different than any other group, maybe a little bit different, usually it's twenty eighty, so twenty, you got eighteen point four percent of your group or sixty four members. Use eighty five percent of your claim dollars. So those are the ones that are either sick or have medications or whatever it is. That are using your plan. So usually I see it around twenty percent and eighty percent, so you're not much, much different than that. The next page just kind of shows you those, shows you actually the numbers, so I just draw. But let's go forward to page twelve, so. Couple more pages, you'll see the. The graph with the age distributions again. The squiggly line is where your membership lies, so no surprise. You know, it's like every year, you can see the graph is a little bit higher on the fifty six to sixty four year olds and the sixty five year olds. Those are the ones that are.
Are you saying we're getting older?
Well, everybody's getting older, every group that has those age bands. Usually your shoulders or your knees or your hips or something's starting to wear out. Yeah, I'm almost in that category too, the old one, I'm in the middle, I'm in the fifty sixty four, so. Then I usually go forward to page fourteen, so go to fourteen and shows your overall spend, it shows your age bands and also show you some diagnosis categories, like I said. The bones, muscles and ligaments are are very present, present on your on your plan for the fifty six, sixty four and the forty six year olds. There is a some cancer treatment going on, there is. Some digestive and there's some, you know, you had quite a few babies or prenatal things that are happening as well. Nothing jumps out and scares me. So now usually go forward through page seventeen. We'll split it in all those dollars into inpatient, outpatient and office. So again, inpatient is some surgeries regarding muscles, bones and and ligaments, and you have some babies.
So about thirteen, is that mean there were thirteen babies?
Well, there's been thirteen. Not so much there've been babies. Yes, so maybe somebody might have been there a couple of times, maybe, maybe they were having issues and they went back home and then they take back and. The next next page, good question though, good. Eighteen is the next page, talks about ER utilization, this is where you'd be seeing a little bit of a jump. So last year you spent a little less than twenty eight thousand, this year you're a little over forty five thousand. So the average cost is about nine hundred thousand.
That's a pretty big jump.
It is. It is, when I look over on the right. None of these really, you know, jump out and say they could maybe, you know, you got a wound on your hand or you got some other. You know, you can't breathe or whatever, felt pain. Those should all probably should go to the.
Collapse.
That's a good question, I didn't look that up either.
I don't know, I don't know what that means.
Yeah.
I don't even know how to say the first word. Think I know. I can tell you more about it.
Well, obviously there was. Yeah, there's a lot of things going on when you went into the visit, so there's probably more than one person working on it, probably. I figure we all like Google. I go to do page twenty one. Page twenty one is the outpatient analysis, again, bones, muscles and ligaments show up there and digestive as well. Lots of different numbers here in the categories, but that's what they highlighted. It's pretty pertinent.
Oh, yeah.
And we'll go forward to the office. Page twenty four. Again, stop me if you have questions. This is, I like to look at the little box over on the right, talks about PCPs and and non-PCPs, basically your family doctor or specialist. You can see there's a little bit of a range of cost. So a hundred and eighty three dollars for your PCP and two seventy one. Very no tell help that I can see that's been used. You do have some chiropractic claims. The next page shows you the diagnosis categories, when I look at the office, I don't usually spend too much time here, because they're all about the same dollar amount. So page twenty six is your top providers. The local hospital is listed first, seventy six visits, you're at Saint Anthony's. Then you have the dunes, you have some specialty. Hospitals and maybe once somebody had something done at dunes or they go to Devoin or they. Um, I do see on law, there are Nebraska men there too. The Nomaio Clinic. On the practitioners, you can see, I think we've had this before, somebody had a. Had a helicopter ride to one of the hospitals, so something must have happened, that I got a helicopter ride to one of the hospitals. It looks like it. But you also highlighted there, you have a di- a chiropractor that's on the. Practitioners, so I don't see that very often, so that's good, that means. Can have other medical issues, but you've got a chiropractor that has thirty nine visits that are claimants that have gone to him. Maybe helps him keep stay at work. Pharmacy. So page twenty seven, again, very similar to last year. Two twenty seven to two twenty eight. The average or the paid for prescription went from seventy nine to eighty six fifty. You can look at the bottom and see a little bit different, the next box. Last year you spent an average of fourteen hundred dollars worth of specialty. Medications, now you're spending a little over forty one hundred dollars in special medications. The next page shows you the number of prescriptions. Has gone down. Generic utilization has gone up. Now, keep in mind that last year where you see the eighty four point five. The COVID shots. Are all run through the pharmacy and they were all non-genere, so that kind of skewed that number a little bit, so. Not saying that it wouldn't have been much higher, but it would have been, should have been a little bit higher with some COVID vaccines. Page twenty nine. This is where you see the the top twenty drugs. So there's some immune. Blood thinner, asthma. Another blood thinner, another asthma, a couple more astmas. All the ones pink, get a guess? Diabetic medications, yes.
You can't hire me away, I know I'm good.
That's that's no different than the other group that had a lot of fifty six to sixty four, sixty five year olds. Any questions on that report? We have large claims, so these are large claims for the same time period, and the time period. Was. November through November. So you see you have. There's nine claims that are highlighted here, these are all claims over ten thousand. So we expect to have twenty six for a group your size, you have forty two. Not real big ones, but just have a lot of, it doesn't take much to get to ten thousand anymore. So things over.
Say that, and you expect us to have one?
Twenty six. Claims show up on this report, you have forty two. So.
Over ten thousand.
Over ten thousand, all the ones that are highlighted on this first page are all hit the stop laws. Some of them hit the stop law for five hundred dollars, some hit it for a few thousand dollars. Over on the right, you see there's some expectations. So the first one, the biggest one, they don't expect to have much, you know, maybe twenty, those are those are bill charges too, so twenty five thousand bill charges might be. Four thousand dollars of pay charges, you know, and depends on what happens, the second one is, I think, is one of the medications.
So the highlighted number, let's just go back up, I'm not gonna say any of this out loud, but that highlighted number is what?
What was paid in this time period.
Could have been bill doubled that.
Yes, exactly, but the the numbers over on the right that I wrote down, the twenty five to fifty, those are expected bill charges, so that number would actually be lower. So what I write those for is if you see, you know, again, we've had in the past where we had a condition that. Oh god, it's just started or it's ongoing, they're looking at or, you know, kidney dialysis or whatever those crazy things can be. As far as you wanna write those down, but there is nothing here that I'm ready to turn about.
What is unmarked name?
Uh, that that means that there is no no diagnosis category. To do that. When you look in the next one, you can see some, I mean, some of the diabetic diabetic medications can. Can definitely run. Close to ten thousand dollars or even more. Even though the member doesn't pay that much. And this is the first year we've actually gotten split up between health charges and pharmacy charges, so you can see that second one is basically all pharmacy charges. Just the right of the highlighted number. And that's nothing, I've seen a. Quite a bit worse. And that's one of the reasons why we wanna look at that Pruden RX, just so. We can reduce that number by sharing some of the co-pay card. Dollars with Pruden. If you can reduce that ten thousand dollars, it's ten thousand dollars accounted. The next page is basically just shows you the trend, so I I pulled this off and just showed you the trend, so.
I like you.
Don't jump ahead, don't jump ahead.
Well, you can understand what number we're on.
I, that's why I'm painting a little picture here.
Well, I'm I'm glad you pointed that out, because I've run the reports every month and I'm seeing a lot on that fifty percent of the stop loss and I thought. For sure, when you got here, it wasn't gonna be good, because there's a ton of names, like you said, we're supposed to have like twenty, we have like forty some, so.
Well, and I like that first page, we had a lot of them on there, barely on there, so fifty thousand, twenty dollars and, you know, whatever, just a little over fifty thousand, so. Yeah. But you gotta you gotta save a little bit of your stop loss coverage.
So sorry, I jumped on.
Okay. Go to go to this page. The one you already looked at. And I kind of highlighted a few things, this is basically just shows you from one year to the next, so let's jump down to. Go to that first box, but let's go to the bottom after that, just shows you total claims and it shows you stop loss, so. Couple of years ago, you had a hundred thousand dollars of stop loss claims. Last year you had two hundred seventy three thousand dollars and this year you have a hundred seventy four thousand. So still still not bad, still running better. Uh, we're collecting more premium than bank claims, so that's a good thing for us, I guess. Look at your premium, now stop loss level still is at fifty thousand, so. In the past, you, a couple of years ago, you paid three twenty four fifty five for stop loss per member. Or excuse me, per employee. You're this year, you're paying currently three fifty eight. The number is going to three seventy nine, so you're getting a five percent increase. Majority of our groups are probably seeing anywhere from fifteen to twenty percent increase. Reason why, you stand at fifty thousand and you talk about our trend is at eight thousand every year, that fifty thousand dollar number actually becomes a little bit less for us. More risk for us, so we might wanna look at eventually going to sixty thousand or whatever, otherwise you're gonna end up still getting. More of a trending or more of an increase in your stop loss. But again, as I when I talk about stop loss increases. Easily you win if there's only four or five stop loss. Well, you got nine currently today, that's how you're gonna have nine going forward. Again, nothing's a crystal crystal ball, so you're guessing what's gonna happen in the future, so. So you're only getting a five point eight percent increase in your stop loss. When you look at network access fee, that number has gone up slightly, just because we're utilizing a few providers that are outside the state. Admin getting the same increase that every other group, so you're getting a four percent low, four percent increase in your admin. Pharmacy staying the same. Margin stays, just raises up just slightly, so you look at ag reviews. That's how we how we expect claims and what's actually happening. So in the past year, it's seventy percent, you got a little bit of a decrease, last year you're ninety three percent and it stayed about the same. This year it's seventy one or seventy two percent of. Running actual to expected. So when you look down here at the highlighted things on the bottom. Expected claims are running are gonna get reduced by three percent. So that's the biggest piece of your premium is eighty percent of the premium is claims, that's getting reduced. So then when you look at stop loss and increase. Other little tiny increases that happen every month, your actually rates are gonna go down a little less than one percent, so point nine one going down. No, you're you're really close. You had a mushed your two numbers together, you've been really close. Good average, you were two and you were minus two. So last year you actually got a minus two, you had a minus two nine point two nine percent, so just slightly. A decrease, the year before that you got a slight increase, and the year before that you had a little over two percent increase, so. Overall, you guys are doing fantastic. I agree. Right now you're doing very good, so get the rate pages. The free rate pages. We don't have anybody on the high dot plan, we can keep that if we want, or we can just not sign that. Three rate pages, then I have this page. This is our. Our contract that we have with McFarlane Clinic, you guys have been participating in, I think it's been working well for you guys. So this is blue distinction total care. So this is how we pay the providers, McFarlane Clinic has little little. Stake in the game. So how they manage cost and care. They get paid a little bit differently, so this is how you guys participate in that. What could possibly cost you anywhere from eight thousand dollars to thirteen thousand dollars, kind of depends on the number of people that are attributed to McFarlane Clinic. Today you have quite a few numbers that I didn't, I didn't pull that report, but you can see it's a hundred and eighty. People that you have today could go up to two hundred and forty members that are attributed to McFarlane Clinic. So they have a stake in the game. When you look at the range over here, the total estimated monthly members. And I can send you a report that actually shows you what your number is today. I did not get that bull. I think that's running well for you. Dental. Got bad news. You didn't get a decrease. You had a zero. Vision. It's coming, I didn't have it yet, so I should get it. Vision is coming. I, they didn't have it yet. So we should get it next week. I sent it to you. I've seen both my groups getting a slight increase in vision. I think with COVID, a lot of people did not, they put off going to the eye doctor, maybe some of those things. Now they're going back to the eye doctor. So there could have been some new glasses and all those kind of things. We'll find out when that happens. This last page is your current plan design. Or your three plans. I probably wouldn't make any changes. The only one I would suggest is maybe tier four, and I forgot to print that off. There's only one or two members that have used a tier four medication. Is maybe raise that up to maybe a hundred dollar. Just kind of steer them back to the brand names or the generic. Again, a reminder, tier four are low value drugs. Those are drugs that have been around for a long time. They lost their patent. Now there's with many generics as well as other brand name drugs that do the same thing, if not for lesser cost. So if somebody took a Lipitor for, for example, they'd be a tier four medication, but there's thirty-five statins that are available to you that do the same thing for lower cost. Then especially when I could set up, I'll set up a time with Courtney to come back. It doesn't need to be doing, parent and board meeting. Maybe we can just have a meeting like you did at the wellness, just to talk about it. I'll ask more information, kind of walk you through what happens.
So you're, you're saying, no, don't be any changes.
I wouldn't make any changes. I mean.
What about the stop loss?
That's something we can look at. We can look at maybe moving that to sixty or sixty-five, especially if you're. So what that happens, it should not affect your total claim. So what it does, it shifts money from a bucket from your stop loss bucket into the claim bucket. So you're going to be at risk for another ten thousand breach one of those claims. So today you have nine or nine people that are over. That's ninety thousand dollars you're going to spend and you might only save forty-two thousand dollars worth of premium. But next year you might only have four people that are over and then you get a, you get a win because you, you get to keep the claim dollars, but you give us the stop off dollars. This is right now, it looks like in the projection, there's only one person that projected most likely going to be over, the ones using the medication. Otherwise, something else happens, but you just never know what's going to happen. But I can run a couple of those. Alternates just to kind of look at it. So I mean, we'll come back in, in first part of April and give you firm rates for our stop loss. I don't see anything impacting that. That's kind of why we look at those predictions. You just never know if something happens.
So for budgetary purposes, level, same thing?
Yeah, I would say, I would say. Because your claims are your big dollar. So if it comes back, top loss maybe is going to go to ten percent. It'd be like a one percent increase or whatever, very slight increase if you suggest rates.
Again, I'm going to ask you. We got fair amount of people that are over sixty-five. That does not work to switch them over to Medicare. Explain that to.
Medicare does not like groups, employers to transfer the risk. So if you're an employee and you're making thirty hours a week and you are ineligible to this plan, you gotta stay, you gotta stay here. Because they always look to see who's eligible. And you send the, your, your tax and wage form and you're listed on that and you're, and you all send your, you're on Medicare. There can be some serious fines in the county. CMS does not play around too much when it looks at that.
Does any of your spouse then too?
No, not spouse, just the member. So if you, you want to pay, you get, you know, low cost for your employee or you for yourself and your spouse wants to go to Medicare, you can go to Medicare. But if you're on this.
Because I can see where it actually. First, that's over sixty-five. It's actually can be, if they're having issues, it's costing more to be on here than being on this year. Out of the pocket.
You guys are pretty generous.
I know.
With your contributions. It's costing the county claim dollars. But Medicare is, I've learned more about Medicare in the last year than I really did want to know. But it becomes very complicated and it's costly.
The whole damn insurance industry is complicated. They do it for a reason.
Well, especially Medicare, if you ask me.
Yeah, I, I think that, you know, it, it actually, if someone sits goodbye and they're on this with your deductibles and stuff and out of pocket, it's costing them.
So we can't let the employee get off, but the spouse could choose to do that.
You can, and you can, if they want to on their own, they want to do that on their own, they can do that on their own. You can't, you know, giving them incentive, you know, hey, if you go off, we're going to give you an extra hundred dollars or whatever, but you can go off if you want. So I mean, that's totally up to you. You're going to have to do that valuation on your own.
And see, I've always brought this up to you because I always thought if we got these people off sixty-five and used what we were paying for insurance to pay for supplemental, would be cheaper for the county. But you're saying.
That's when you do that, you and.
You get in trouble with CMS.
Yeah, you would.
Because they would come back.
They're like, you're passing on that risk.
Okay, that now you.
But if it's, if you're on your own and say it costs you five hundred, three hundred dollars a month for here and you figure out that I go to the supplement, I get this and a little tiny party plan and it's two hundred and forty dollars and I get a zero out of pocket. Maybe I can do that on my own, but you can't give them them. An incentive will do that.
Okay.
You're not the only one that asked for that question.
Well, I've been, I've been on this thing four times. Because I did, I just did not register looking for the county's benefit to get, then move on.
Right.
Save here.
Right.
It'd be cheaper to pay for a supplemental policy.
Yeah, no, you can't do that. Yeah, questions? Thank you. I could, well, you can bring it up. It might change, but I doubt it.
I know, so I didn't bring it down.
I've booked out a couple of hours for this thing.
I didn't expect that. That was not expected.
Well, I'll tell you what, from what I've been hearing, the boards I've been on.
Yeah.
I was just, we're, we're very fortunate. I was just at another county. Last week, it was a little over fifteen percent.
Fifteen percent increase.
So, but I got, I, I kind of told you, you're two, a little over two, two, three years ago, point, then two, and so overall maybe two percent increase over the last four years. Will that continue? The odds are no, the odds are no, you just never know. Yeah, you just never know.
Well, appreciate you taking.
Yeah, you're welcome. And I'll work with Courtney to have a time to come back, talk about pharmacy and wellness. We got to.
Thanks for the good news.
Yes, you are welcome.
Thank you.
Glad I can share that with you.
More in order for motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Also.
Motion in a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor, say nothing. I was saying hi.
Alright.
Opposed, question carries. So am I to let department heads, people working on their budget snow to budget zero, or are you guys going to talk about that over here?
I would make it sound like level or, I mean, yeah.
I know, but I, we've had that before. You guys have talked about possibly maybe changes.
I don't want to go away from eighty-five fifteen. Rich did, but I would not. Is, I don't know, can it be a discussion item?
I think it can be a discussion item when we start talking some of the compensation stuff like next Monday.
Okay.